Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District being held on Monday, September 15th, 2025, at 6:30 in the District Administration. If you please remember your pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you very much, everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bon Jovi. We have a little presentation lined up for our next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank, we have a number of staff members, students here with our principal, Mr. Parental Leone. I want to also thank the other high school administrators, Lotian and Carmen. Thank you very much. So, we had said, one of our goals this year was to have presentations, and it's really academic presentations if we can. So tonight, our high school staff is going to present on the Fine Arts Pathway, Seal of Civic Readiness, Sealed by Literacy, and ASL program American. Something like with it. Do they have to say program American? Something like with it. No worries. In my previous role as district superintendent, you know, I have to say, you know, these, the seals of civic readiness and the sealed by literacy and these other programs, they were introduced a number of years ago and many schools did not jump on this because it is extra work. It is extra work.
It's a little choppy, but it's black.
It's no music, right? So it's supposed to... Oh.
No, I mean, they're-
Fun, though. Like, it's not like hard, it's fun.
I like ASL class because this class is so fun.
It's a small-
Beginning's great.
Yeah.
ASL is a fun, hands-on learning experience.
I love ASL class because we learn a lot and it's easy to learn.
It's fun, though. Like, it's not like hard, it's fun.
I like ASL class because this class is so fun.
It's a small class, so you get to know everyone personally.
This class is like a little family.
Oh, you should join ASL because it's lit, it's so lit, and you're gonna have so much fun. It's a blast.
You should join ASL because you can learn how to sign and you could use that to like communicate with people.
Okay, so those are my clips. The last thing I have, as we're closed, is with our two student speakers. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I'm gonna turn it over to them now.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Sophia Gowens and I'm a senior. I'm in 12th grade. Last year, I decided to take the ASL program spontaneously because I wanted the chance to explore another language. Although by the time the semester of ASL had ended, I was shocked at how much I had learned from Miss Bernhardt. The structure of the course had so much to it but planned out perfectly. Tests and group work were easy and the teacher had help a ton. My favorite project was the music video me and Sadie had worked on together. It drilled the habit of continuous and fast signing into my head. However, this summer, I had the opportunity to utilize my knowledge of sign language with a girl who had been completely deaf at work. This was only a couple weeks ago. Because of ASL class, I was able to learn and understand a new language efficiently in just a few months. Thank you for letting me speak and thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is C.D. Rogers. I'm a junior. I took ASL because I always found it so interesting.
So good evening everyone, I am Natalie Pollak, I teach French at Goshen High School, and I'm one of the coordinators for this New York State SEAL by Literacy. My colleague who handles the ELA side of things, Terry Baker, could not be here tonight. So the SEAL was started in two thousand thirteen. It was designed to recognize graduating students who are highly proficient in English and another language. It highlights and promotes world language education in our schools. Students can include it on their college applications and discuss it with their admissions officers at the prospective colleges. It also, of course, is an advantage for employment. But finally, what I think is the most advantage to it is, the best aspect to it is that it showcases our diversity we have in the district. To earn the SEAL, students need three points in both English and another language. In ELA, students can earn these points by attaining an eighty or higher on the ELA Regents exam, a three or higher on the AP Comp exam, and maintaining an eighty-five or higher average in both eleventh and ninth grade English classes. So there are some students who don't meet these requirements and they have to do a project in English. Did I do this right? So for world language students, they earn one point by getting an eighty-five or higher in a checkpoint C class. So that's our French or Spanish level four or level five classes, and two points by completing a research project and presentation. Students who are getting the SEAL in a language they have not studied in school have to take an outside checkpoint C exam. So we try to get that started a little bit earlier. The project needs to be different for each language. So if they're doing, have to do it in English, they have to do a completely different topic for each language. It can be on any topic they choose. Students often use a project they have done in class at some point in their high school career, but they tweak it to find the appropriate sources. Students are evaluated on their interpretive reading and listening skills by finding three sources, two written and one audio to use on their project. They are assigned a mentor who speaks the language and they discuss the sources. The mentors score the students' interpretive skills. Students then write a reflection paper about what they have learned and how they plan to use it. The idea is to showcase their ability to use a range of tenses in the language. This is their presentational writing evaluation. And finally, in April, students will present what they have learned on their chosen topic in the target language to a panel of usually two speakers of the language. Students speak for about three to five minutes and are evaluated for the presentational speaking score. After the presentation, the panel asks the students questions about their project and their experience in the target language. This is the interpersonal speaking and it's the final assessment. Students are scored using a rubric based on the ACT-Phil proficiency scale, and students need to achieve an intermediate, high, or better in each category. Here at Goshen, we are in our third year of offering this pathway to our students. So two years ago, we had eight students who got the SEAL in French and Spanish. Last year, we were up to twelve students who got the SEAL in French or Spanish, plus two more who did projects in French, Spanish, and English. And this year, we are currently over forty seniors who are interested in pursuing the SEAL, as well as several juniors who plan on taking the process. And we have a much wider range of prospective languages this year such as Polish, German, Russian, Chinese, Urdu, Haitian Creole, and Yoruba. And that last one I had to actually look up. It's an African dialect from Niger in the Congo. And so now I'll turn the mic over to Mary Gazalaya, who began the process last year and she will receive her SEAL in French this year.
Hi, so I was told I'd just be speaking a little bit about my experience with the SEAL. I completed all of it, most of it, actually. I think I only have one point left last year in French. And I find it was, I found it was a very convenient process, the whole thing. It was set up very, to be very accessible. You know, the meetings were, with Ms. Palanis, were regular, and I didn't have any chance to procrastinate since I knew I would have another meeting with her the next two weeks. The presentation itself, I felt, was very easy too, I guess, because it was, I think, in the old gym and everyone else was doing the SEAL as well. So I was surrounded by people. It felt pretty supportive. And since I knew Ms. Pollak and Ms. Palanis would be the ones interviewing me, I was pretty comfortable talking with them as well. Overall, it was not a very stressful process and very rewarding, I'd say, for what it offers. That's really all I have to say. I did my project on the Paris Opera.
Amazing job. Thank you, Mary, Ms. Pollak. Also, Ms. Baker couldn't be here tonight, and then Ms. Palanis for laying the groundwork to this. Amazing job by all of our teachers and students. Now, it's my sorry. My pleasure to introduce Mr. Wanti in the career vocational internship.
Yeah, there's a video.
Do you want me to play it now?
If you don't mind.
Hello all, my name is Aiden Myers. Hello all, my name is Aiden Myers. I was in Ms. Wanti's internship class in the fall of my senior year, so this past school year. I was a maintenance intern at Take Flight Aviation in Montgomery. It was the best experience I've ever had. Everyone there was professional, but also very fun and outgoing. She required everyone to go for one hour, but I liked it so much that I was only able to stay for two hours. And now, I was able to use that internship to help me get in to Embry-Riddle Air Nautical University. I'd like to thank Ms. Wanti for taking all of her time that she spent on us to help have such an amazing internship opportunity. And I wish everyone else the best of luck at their internships.
Hi, my name is Aiden Biglio. I'm a two thousand twenty-four graduate, and I was able to take the career internship course with Ms. Wanti. This course is super beneficial for me. I was being able to give in an internship with a soccer company and work with their marketing team and gain some
That's okay.
hands-on experience, as well as just and I was able to take the career internship course with Ms. Wanti. This course was super beneficial for me. I was being able to give in an internship with a soccer company and work with their marketing team and gain some hands-on experience. As well as just doing an internship, I was able to learn how to properly write a good resume and a cover letter, which now, as I'm applying for internships at college, the things I learned with that class was super beneficial to actually be well-prepared. And I think this course that everyone should take if they have the opportunity.
Okay, I just thought I would let the students speak for the program. I think they say it best. They're the ones who are there, they're in it, they're having the experiences, they're networking, they're building their resumes, participating in a mock interview. So I just wanted to start with that. My name is Danielle Wanti. I am the career internship and vocational internship coordinator at the high school. We have, I say we, I always say we. I've placed over about three hundred and seventy interns in the last twelve years. We've had the career internship program for twelve years, and just recently, in the last two years, we've added the vocational internship program. And really, the only difference is the vocational internship program is geared toward students who are not interested in pursuing college beyond, you know, maybe a two-year degree or trade school. And then the other program is geared more towards students who want to pursue longer academic careers, perhaps a bachelor's degree, master's degree, and beyond. So I think it's very obvious the benefits of having an internship for young people. And I'll just mention a few of those right now. They're getting real-world experience. Many of the students who are in the course, they may have not had a job at all, or they may work as a pastor, or they may work in a restaurant, but not getting their job-specific or career-specific experiences. So it does give them the real-world experience. The networking has been fantastic. I tell them, shake as many hands as possible. Introduce yourself to everyone. It doesn't matter. Because you're going to become a familiar face, and even though the lawyer that you're doing your internship with may not have a position for you, they may know someone who does. And so it's a great opportunity for the students to build their network. Career exploration, I tell my students, even if you have a terrible internship experience, I'm probably going to be smiling. It probably was a great internship experience because you figured out what you don't want to do, and that's as important as figuring out what it is that you do want to do. The resume booster is great. They use it for their Common App, which is always something that adds a little value. They also use it when they're applying for college internships, and they use it to apply for their jobs ultimately. So the resume booster is certainly beneficial. Potential for employment and college internships. I have had a student, and this is something that I'm so proud of, who started their internship in two thousand twenty. And he just finished working there in two thousand twenty-five. So he stayed and he, I have a video of him, but I had three minutes. He was able to put himself through college at New Paltz by working at the law office in Goshen that he started working at in two thousand twenty. So that's pretty incredible. And then I, a lot of my interns are hired from their sites to stay on either for the summer before they go away to college, or they're invited back after they're on breaks and home for summer. And then the last one is the confidence building. In the very first few days of class, we do an activity where we shake hands. And, you know, they're very confident in the beginning, saying like, this is shaking hands, like, anyone can do this. And then we go through the activity and they're nervous, and I say, this is what it's going to feel like on your first day. They're nervous and they kind of fumble, and we go through all of those, you know, soft skills that are required for being in a professional setting. And having the internship helps them build that confidence because then they're doing it day in and day out. And then the last part of my presentation, because I could stand here all night, I did invite two interns who are fresh graduates of the program. So they were going to flip a coin to see who had to go first. Who would like to go first? Okay, Kylie, come on down.
Hi, my name's Kylie Bryant, and I'm a senior this year. Last year, I participated in the career internship program at Goshen High School, and I entered at the Orange County District Attorney's Office with Leah Canton. I watched, I sat in on many E-CAP appointments and I watched the trial and organized many files. I also got to have a mock interview where we sat at like, a table like this and had teachers interview us. So we got to see and feel how like, a real interview would feel like. But overall, attending the internship solidified my decision in wanting to go to law school and become a lawyer.
Good evening, my name is Sydney Fraser, and I'm a senior at the Goshen High School. During my internship studying architecture last year, Atlanta Associates, right down the road, I had the privilege to work with very intelligent people. They would answer all of my many questions I had to the fullest extent. Not only was I learning there, I was also laughing with them and their inside office jokes, such as the Three Musketeers, who I gratefully got to spend time with each one and go into depth about all the questions I had for architecture. Through my time at LAN, I grew my passion for design while also realizing I do not like being behind a computer all the time. I would much rather have social interaction with people. That is why I am so beyond appreciative of Ms. Wanti's class, which I'll be taking again this spring to help me find a career that I feel will better fit me. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you, Ms. Wanti, students. Ms. Wanti does a amazing job of reaching out to all the community partners. Just, this is just an example of her work. Now, it's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Panzer and Mr. Malina Topol, SEALs in the Grades.
Good evening, I'm Reid Panzer. I am a social studies teacher. And Mr. Malina and I, along with this civil legist, who is not to be here tonight, we are the Civic SEAL Committee. And the SEAL Civic Readiness started a couple of years ago, and it's it's a designation on their transcript that shows that our students are graduating with civic knowledge, skills, mindset, and experiences. So you'll notice on the charts, there are two sides. There's civic knowledge and civic participation. You need a total of six points to earn the Civic SEAL, but you have to have a minimum of two points from the knowledge side and a minimum of two points from the participation side. We have built into our department seven points that are required. If students are just doing what they're supposed to do to get through our classes, they will be getting seven points with the Civic SEAL. But we also, why would we stop there? We have so many. There's, we have up to five additional points on the civic knowledge side with the honors and AP classes, the college of the classes that we offer. If you get mastery on your Regents exams, the global in the US, it's another half a point per exam. And we have up to seven and a half points on our participation. Our goal is to have our students graduate to become the best citizens they could be and to go out and do great things in our world. And I'm happy to say that on our inaugural year in two thousand twenty-four, we had eighty-seven percent of the kids graduating earn the Civic SEAL, and last year, ninety-one percent earn the Civic SEAL. I put that picture in, I'm sorry. The goal is to have a hundred percent. We're working with our ELL population. We work with our life skills kids. We want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to have this designation because it's part of what makes us American, is we should be actively participating in our democracy. I happen to have taught Mr. Malina. He was one of my first AP students, so he has been promoting civics since nineteen fourteen. And then our capstone recipients, there's a capstone project that is four points in the civic participation because it's really hard to earn. The kids have to come up with a way, it's like a civic action project, to how to better their community. They go through the steps. Sometimes they fail at it. We've had students, actually, why don't you talk to that, the types of things that you're doing? I could just talk all day.
So for the civic action class students, first, identify an issue in their community that they want to address or change. We've in the past had with the new Erie Street renovations, a ball boat donation bin for students who may not, or community members who may not have sports equipment. In the past, we've had a peer tutoring system set up at the high school. So students identify these issues, and then they have to actively go to meetings. They have to get approval. They have to meet Mr. Pantleone with the Parks and Rec Board, and then get these ideas approved and then enact them. And they finally get the capstone by presenting in front of a panel of community members that usually include a few local politicians, Mr. Pantleone, Dr. Carter on it. And students generally get to graduate with this great experience, how they learned, how they can affect their community for the better.
And they don't have to be successful. We had a student who tried to tackle the traffic problem at the high school, and he met failure at, this kid came up with all these ideas and he just kept getting roadblock after roadblock, and then he had to figure out what to do next. And that's part of, that's part of the skill. Like, it's, you know, developing, I don't know if you guys know, developing public policy can be a little tricky. You know, so the civic action projects kind of give the kids a taste of what it means to develop public policy and do good in the community. And I'm so proud of this, this team. I'm so proud of my department because when I said, hey, we're going to kind of change some things to make sure we get as many kids, they said, what do you need? How can we do it? And again, we're we're moving towards that hundred percent, which is the goal. So thank you.
Last but not least, it's my pleasure to welcome up two of our students to talk about our computer pathways. Mr. Michael Pagliacca and Mr. Ryan Fitzpatrick.
I don't know who this is.
That's mine.
Yeah, I'll use it back. So, hold on, I'm going to make sure. Bit short here, but.
Can I move this?
You got all day. We can hear it, it's okay. First thing, Billy, how you doing? My dad want me to say hi. Second, unfortunately, Mr. Johnson isn't here tonight. As you've already heard, he has a family emergency. But he texted me, I got it, as I got out of practice, hey, I won't be able to be there. Make sure you guys smash this, so. You've got a job to do right now. But we've had computer science pathways here for, I believe, I'm pretty sure it's five years. As he just saw his first class through, that was the class of two thousand twenty-four. So this is the sixth one now. But it's been, you start it, your freshman year with Discovering Computer Science. Sophomore year, once you get done with Discovering, it really opens up for you. You can do Python, Java, the Syracuse Project Vans, which is cybersecurity. The other two classes, Python and Java, are offered through Siena. They are two credits for Python and then three credits for Java, which was two thirty, and I believe, yeah, here we go, thank you. Which was two thirty and then, oh, it was four, so I was wrong. And then it was two thirty and then three fifty, I believe, for the one with four credits from Siena, which was the introduction to Java. But once you get past freshman year, it opens up for you. So I'm currently taking the information security class through Supa, and I have two juniors in my class that, because it's the only way it would fit in their sex schedule, my apologies, they have to go back and take the Java and data structures, which really gives you guys a lot of flexibility for us students. Because we all know, if you want to take APs, heavy course loads, sometimes things don't work. Sometimes AP Calc is ninth period. You want to take an internship ninth period, it doesn't work out. So they've given you space here. Where to work. But what else I want to talk about? Yeah, so I actually have nothing written down with me because this pathway has shaped my career. I took Discovering Computer Science. It was, we were sitting in eighth grade. It was, what class do you want to take? Discovering Computer Science. Yeah, I'm going to do that. Get in there, we do Java, Python, CSS, which is websites. That's ready for notes. This web guy there. Second?
HTML.
HTML, oh, CSS is the, it's the, yeah, websites, yeah, fancy. Tell you what, slowly ask me question.
Have any plans to block to keep him?
Anyone. Keeping it on topic here. Keeping it on topic here on this. Keeping it on topic here with the pathway, with what it offers. In this, in the Supa course, we had last year three of the top six, and the year before that, it was also three. So this course produces high academic, like, students. It gives you that. And but I don't really have anything else to say about it. It shaped my career. I'm currently going to enroll and study data science, so. Thanks. You.
Tell them where, that's.
Fuck, no, probably, is my main one.
So towards the end of eighth grade, when you're, when I was planning on, okay, towards the end of eighth grade, when I was choosing my classes for my first year in high school, I, I knew I had an interest in computers. But, you know, until I first stepped into Discovering Computer Science, the first step in the computer science pathway, I didn't really, I didn't realize that I had a passion for computer science or cybersecurity. This, this, you know, this pathway, it really, it helped me. This, this pathway made me realize that I do love programming. I do love cybersecurity. And it's it's, okay. The, the, the classes are, the, the lessons are comprehensive and fun because you're taking the same four class, like, because everyone in the pathway is taking the same four classes, you are with the same classmates each year, so it kind of fosters a sort of a mini-community as you go down the pathway. And
You're doing way better than Brian.
I also didn't have anything written down.
I'll say, thank you guys for your time. Don't really got anything else to say. Art, we were told here, speak from your heart. That's all I need you guys to do, so. Thank you guys.
Thank you, board. Thank you, teachers. We need to see the passion. I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. That was really detailed and very in-depth. Just probably don't be like, say something.
I wanted to jump in also and thank all the students, the teachers, Ms. Pam Sloan and his team. It was amazing. It's nice to be at a board meeting and talk about students and the great programs that we have here at Goshen. And too often, you hear sometimes negative things about our young people. And here, we're showing that, wow, look at what we have. So this is going to be our mission, is to continually present our fantastic programs that we have here in Goshen. Now, I know that, I don't want to cut you off this press, but I know that the students have a lot of homework to do, the teachers have some parenting to do. So at this time, this should be the time for you to scoot out if you will show the audience. Yeah.
You're back, all right. All right, thank you very much, everyone. So moving on to our next item, just a few things to report for this evening. First of all, I just wanted to say, back to Francesca Aron, joining us again. Seventh term, returning as our student rep, so good to have you back, Francesca. And it's also a quick thank you to Mr. Bon Jovi, guys. You know, we see here the school year kicking off in a very different way from school years past that we've observed. Lots of great information coming, new formats to these meetings. Exciting things happening. Generalized buzz around the buildings, you may have noticed. So really feels like we're off to a great start, so thank you. Seeing a lot of good things happen here. That's all I have for my report this evening. We'll turn it over to Francesca Aron.
Thank you. So nice to see you all. Keep it summer. It's been a great start of the year and a few updates from the schools. Starting at the high school, I feel like it's off to a strong start with managing celebrating events. Earlier this month, staff began the year with grade-level meetings to ensure everyone's aligned with academic expectations, as well as prepared for months ahead. This week at the high school on September seventeenth, several events will be occurring. Firstly, freshman rush after school, giving students the chance to explore, join a new variety of clubs and activities. There will be an AIS presentation from five thirty to six PM, a twelfth-grade college application workshop from six to six-thirty, a ninth and tenth grade navigating high school session from six to seven PM, as well as the GHS open house from seven to eight. Looking ahead, homecoming will be held on October eleventh with the Friday night for the 15th of October, and for October tenth. Moving on to the middle school, this week marks the beginning of Spirit Week at CJ Hooker, giving students a chance to show their school pride. The CJ Hooker's classic book fair is being held in the old gym from Thursday, September eleventh through Tuesday, September sixteenth, from eight AM until two thirty. The fair will also be open during the sixth and seventh, eighth grade open houses nights. Several events are also coming up for both parents and students. Seventh and eighth grade parent orientation will be taking place on Tuesday, September sixteenth, from six to six-thirty, as well as the sixth grade rec night from, on Thursday, September eighteenth, from five to seven PM. At GIS, families can find information on how to join clubs, as well as extracurricular activities on the GIS PTO Facebook page. And lastly, at both GIS and SAS, students are currently celebrating Kindness Week. This is encouraging students to practice kindness and build a positive school community. Feelings for each day at SAS can be found on the SAS PTO Facebook page. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Francesca. Moving on, do we have any board member committee reports, legislative reports, or Oxford reports? All right, no updates this evening. So now our next item, our interim superintendent's report, Mr. Bon Jovi.
Thank you, President Poff. This Francesca, great job. Thank you for taking the time to find out, you know, information from all the buildings, from all districts. That's great. Great work. I had my, actually, my first superintendent's county meeting this past Friday, BOSI's, and one thing they handed out. So BOSI's student program, you get acquainted with Honorable St. BOSI's, so we have a great relationship with them. And we send a lot of students to their fantastic programs. So we'll, we'll send this out in an email to the board, but they have tours for board members. So the dates, they're during the day, though. That might be tough for some of us. October eighth at nine AM, and again, in March at two PM, that's at Arden Hill. So this coming October eighth at nine AM, you can do a tour of the BOSI's at Arden Hill. And then in the, in Bullcrisp campus, that's November nineteenth at two PM, and then again, in Abley in the morning. So we'll get that flyer out to the board members. And let me know if you're interested. I'd be more than happy to join any board members who might to go on one of those tours. Francesca talked about the open houses, so we've had, you know, open houses last week at GIS and Scottstown. This week, they're at the middle school and high school, so it's been my pleasure to be at all those, just, you know, meet a lot of people. You know, the principals all have been doing a fantastic job. And again, it's all about communication, it's all about making the connections with the community, the parents and the guardians. Francesca also answered homecoming, so besides the game, the big homecoming game, of course, is the homecoming dance. So I do want to thank, I know that in the past, that the different booster clubs, or a booster club has been running the dance, but this year, the high school administration is going to be thinking all the running of the dance in cooperation and collaboration with the booster club. Uh, so the monies are still going to go all towards, uh, the all-in-one grand party. It's just that the administration will be kind of taking over the running of the dance. So it'll be, uh, it'll be a fantastic night for all, I'm sure. Next month, also, uh, Miss Van Damren and I, I know she'll be giving her report, but we'll be doing a, kind of an introductory budget report at the October meeting. Uh, budget season, really, it's, it's all year long, but really, kind of, it, it, October is usually the unofficial kickoff of the budget season, so we'll give you an overview on that. I want to talk about, again, the middle school principal position, so that posting is up on O L S. It's there till September thirtieth, we are getting a lot of interest in that position, so I monitor it daily. We met with, uh, uh, teacher union representatives, and we'll be picking, uh, our committee for the interviews. Our goal is to have the interviews, initial interviews, the weeks of October sixth through seventeenth, in that, in that two-week period. Uh, and then have final interviews, probably, uh, October twentieth to thirty first. And then the goal is to appoint someone at the November tenth board meeting. The likelihood of having someone ready for that October meeting would, because the October meeting is October fourteenth. So, uh, you never know, but, uh, realistic goal is to have someone appointed at that November board meeting. And then depending on who it is, we'll see how much time they have. But, uh, Principal Reese and, um, Ms. Van Damren are doing a fantastic job running the middle school. And, um, looking forward to getting those interviews on, on the way. Uh, we have a policy meeting, our first policy meeting is, uh, Wednesday, the twenty fourth at five thirty. Uh, so we're working on some of our new policies. And again, the next board meeting is Tuesday, October fourteenth. Just note that it is a Tuesday night, because of, uh, the day before is Homeless Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. So that is all I have for my Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi. Moving on to our next item, our assistant superintendent for business reports, Lorraine Van Damren.
Thank you and good evening. This is just a reminder that although the students are all entitled to free meals this year, we are still collecting the free and reduced applications. And that is because this information helps the district to qualify for grants. And to maintain our state aid or any changes in state aid will occur because of the information that is needed for that. Um, we've sent out notifications on Parent Square, we also have the forms available on the website. And we are going to have them as handouts or available to people, parents, when they come to orientation or open house as well. I've issued a R F P, which is a press for proposals from the banks, and that's because our M and T Bank, um, agreement is expiring at the end of this month. So I hope to have a approved or a recommendation for the board to approve at the board meeting in October. Our financial information in your board packets is for the month of August. We did receive some excess cost aid, now this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year still. That's our last payment of excess cost aid that we'll receive for the prior year. Now, all of our aid coming in will be for the current year. Uh, we also received some other state aid, and this is for homeless students that are from other districts that are placed in our district. We actually get payment for them through New York State, rather than billing the districts like we do for foster schools. So those can actually fill the other school districts for. We have district of location billing, twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for services that we provide for students from other districts that go to the private district located within our school. And our interest earnings this month were seventy-nine thousand dollars. Our total budget status report shows expenditures in the general fund group, August thirty-first, at six point six million dollars, which is six point eight percent of the total budget. And we earned two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in revenue through August certain, sorry, that can give you the total. That's the amount of revenue we earned in August, four point three percent is of the total revenue in, earned in August. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Right now, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction personnel and technology report, Dr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus, good evening, everyone. Uh, so I have a few updates for you, um, it, it's kind of riding on, uh, the coattails of our presentation, which is a good thing. Mrs. Longo is here to talk about the individual art assessment pathway. Um, and so everything that we had submitted to N I C E regarding the pre-unit sequence, the assessments, uh, and the portfolio rubrics has been approved, so we do have now official N I C E approval for that pathway. Uh, again, very proud of achieving another four plus one pathway in preparation for what we're coming by way of the group admission. Also wanted to let you know that, uh, as of Thursday of last week, the second submittal of the, uh, C T E pathway reapproval application, it was submitted to the state, so just pass this around for you to take a look at, uh, if, if you choose. Uh, we had some great recommendations made by a couple of individuals from the industry, and we did submit that to N I C E. Everything looks great, the feedback that we received on Friday morning was that we're all set for reapproval. Uh, and so now we'll wait for those next final steps to come, and that was in advance of the deadline, and so everything that was spoken of tonight uh, by our wonderful students who presented a very good presentation. Set to keep them on track in their sequence, again, another four plus one pathway in cybersecurity. Also wanted to let you know, uh, that the legal notice and request for proposal R F P for U P K, if you want to just pass it around. Um, that has been sent out and should be making its way into three major publications in our area, uh, shortly. And so the way that we designed it this year was to ask for proposals regarding fifty-four students in-house and up to a hundred and six off-site. Uh, so we'll see what comes our way, we'll take a look at those, uh, in central office, and then together as a group and choose which way we wanna proceed with, uh, either stay in the course of U P K or expand in our U K program. Again, up to one hundred and sixty, that's our target, so we'll keep doing so, okay? Um, I've had the opportunity to work closely with our elementary administrative team, uh, regarding the N I C E literacy attestation. Uh, so everything that we have in-house for our pre-K three literacy program, uh, by way of, of curriculum, um, our programs, our supplemental materials, all of that has to go through a process, uh, and it has to be deemed aligned with science and reading and instructional best practices. So we did submit everything that we have in-house over to, uh, N I C E, and we did receive approval of our programs and supplemental materials. So we're, we're right on track with science and reading and that major initiative. And finally, I just wanna mention that today, we had representatives from Language Live, which is an E L A intervention program uh, onsite at the high school, that will be, uh, giving us a two-day training. I'm not going to, uh, steal the thunder from P P S, so if you don't mind, I'd like to ask, um, Dr. Henderson to come up and just speak to it briefly.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, members of the Board of Education. The P P S department is always looking to expand our curriculum and our programs and services, especially in the area of reading. We are looking for programs that are based on the science of reading. So today, we were fortunate enough to have our middle school and high school teachers trained in the Language Live program, which is a program that was developed to support students who are significantly below grade level. This program focuses on comprehension skills, literacy knowledge, vocabulary and language structure, as well as word recognition, phonological awareness, decoding and sight words. What's great about the program is it is a teacher-led program with some online activities that are available. Um, it focuses on age-appropriate, high-interest-level texts, which is great for our students as they get older, uh, to bridge that gap between the, their skills and their reading levels. This program also, what is great about the program is it provides real-time information about student progress, so if students are struggling in a concept, instead of pushing them forward, it tailors it to the individual needs of students. So this curriculum is going to be used at our middle school and high schools and our reading classes. We have the rest of the training tomorrow, so we're looking forward to implementing that. And then I thought I would just add that coming up later in the month, our staff at the elementary, middle and high school are being trained, they're getting a refresher course in the SMARTS executive functioning curriculum, which is used at S A S, G I S, actually, all four buildings. And it equips the teachers in tools to explicitly teach executive functioning strategies that build self-awareness, self-reliance and motivation. So we're really excited to have that refresher training.
Thank you. Um, so the only thing I'm mad about Language Live is that that also aligns with science and reading, curriculum structural practices. So we continue to expand for more to our students. And that is my, but we keep it better.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next item, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have Brad and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
Aye.
All right. We have no old business, moving on to new business. Does anybody have a need to fill any of the action items out? No, fantastic. Right, we need a motion to approve the new business. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the new business items as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Right, on to our next item. Any open agenda items or board member comments? I did, I did have one thing that I was gonna go ahead and, uh, bring up with the team tonight. So when we put together our, uh, governance handbook, we set as one of our goals in the months of September, October, to reevaluate and look at board goals. Um, these board goals are governance level goals to ensure that we are filling our responsibilities and obligations when it comes to oversight, policy-based budgeting, et cetera. In the past few years, we've set a few goals. We have our policy overhaul happening, continuing, getting back on track with those meetings, we fire our interim superintendent. We've included a lot of stakeholder community group meetings in some of these big tasks we've done, such as our code of conduct overhaul. And so keeping that in mind, I thought it'd be a good time now to open up that discussion and see if anybody had any other thoughts on board goals that might tie into governance and leadership effectiveness, anything we may have not touched on yet. And, Mr. Bon Jovi, you're welcome to contribute as well, if, if you have something that you've seen in the past that might be helpful for the team as a goal, or living years as well.
I think at this point, I'm still, kind of getting to know everyone and, uh, the working of the board. Uh, you know, certainly it's, uh, you know, I'm sure you've had board retreats in the past, but that might be something, uh, to think about in the future. Uh, maybe a board retreat, uh, you know, it, it's tough, I know everyone's very busy, uh, you know, usually you try to find it. You know, maybe do it like on a Saturday for like half a day, and not, not, not a long day. But then you kind of come up with goals, things to work on, uh, not just board governance, but just kind of board unity, which, which we have. So it's something I could work with, uh, you, President Loftus, and Vice President. Talk about your, our, we might want to discuss that.
Thank you.
One of the things I think we've, we've, we've talked about it, we've come on back and forth, uh, with the books, I feel that we need to look at a master plan, whether it be buildings, whether it be this building, kind of, uh, see incorporate. Uh, it was actually discussed tonight about traffic issues at the high schools, we're gonna do it to see if, if that could be incorporated in any way. But come up with a solid plan moving forward, actually see what we're gonna do with this building, what's, what's the best for the district for students, and then if we do sell it, where do we go?
I, I certainly agree with that, having a master plan in place is always a good idea. Um, and back to your point, Mr. Bon Jovi, we did have a, uh, a governance training about two years ago. And we had, uh, Dr. Carter here, Ms. Lamren was here as well, and it actually was pretty successful, we, we felt that it was a good, good meeting, um, it was all the same folks here. So we decided we probably don't have to repeat that process, but, yeah, any other thoughts, let's keep that going, okay? That was the only item I had, if anybody has anything else.
Not, not related to the goals, but I do want to thank, uh, Mr. Bon Jovi and his team for bringing in the students and the administration tonight, uh, and the teachers, uh, it's always nice to have an administrator come up and give a presentation, but, you know, and I know the high schools are ve- very easy to do that, because the students can articulate themselves very well. Um, but to hear about the programs that we have and to see how we are continuing to change, um, and set ourselves and diversify that whole portfolio at the high school, really kind of separates Goshen from the other districts and counties. And that's what, you know, I, I know, a, a lot of us have been talking about, you know, and, 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 you know, how do we set ourselves to raise that bar, so to hear the students talk, the teachers talk, uh, it was, it was really good. So I just wanted to say thank you to yourself, the administration, Mr. Kirk, me all and his team, uh, the high school, the teachers for coming in and giving up their time along with those students, because I know a lot of those students, and they are extremely busy, and, uh, and, and it was nice, so, uh, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, yeah, it's a team effort, uh, if you wanna, you know, thank the entire administrative team and all cabinet members, really pulling together there, and, uh, we're on a positive path. The future is bright and.
Most certainly, anybody have anything else? All right, great, very good, then we just need a motion for executive session. Be resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to re-convene the business portion of the new discussions related to the employment history, take your personal concerns, all those in favor? Thank you and have a great night, everyone.